I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We'll call him Hoffman.
Mr. Longshore.
President.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudkamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
You should have received copies of the minutes of the regular council meeting dated May 7, 2013, and the special council meeting of May 21, 2013. Are there any corrections or additions to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to take a motion to be adopted. It's presented motion by Mr. Longshore, second by Ms. Skidmore, and a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. TJ, you are our special presentation of our Explorer Post to see.
Yes, sir. This is Osterstolz as well. She's a, we're both Explorer advisors. We wanted to meet here today to have you guys meet a portion of our Explorer program. So, one at a time, we're going to stand up, go ahead and introduce. Andrew Rose, if you want us to go ahead and stand up here, Andrew. Evan Adi, we'll go stand up right beside him. Ray McCamey, stand up there. She's laughing because I'm bad with names. Angel Stafford, and Emily Bartino. Explorers here, they just competed in the 39th Annual Southwest Ohio Regional Explorer Competition, the third week of May. Competed in several scenarios ranging from crime scene to traffic stops to crisis negotiations. They received a second place in crisis negotiations out of 20 teams, ranging from teams from New York all the way to, from New York to Cleveland, Ohio. They, Evan Adi, received first place in courtroom testimony. So, that might be a future attorney right there.
He didn't have me cross-examining.
No, he didn't. They did a fine job. They worked very hard. The Explorers here, they attend college as well as work full-time, so me having them come in every other week is a little bit difficult, especially sometimes when I have them come in during Mother's Day or Father's Day or something like that, and their moms are wanting to hit me over the head. But, they do a great job. They put a lot of work into making this Explorer Post what it is, and we're extremely happy for their achievement for the competition. I'd like to also recognize Emily Bartino. She's been a post sergeant for a little over two years, and we have just promoted her to lieutenant. So, she's, she has been an extreme asset to this, to this post. Without her, Osterstolz and I wouldn't have been able to do what we do, working shifts. So, a lot of times when we get called out, go to calls or something like that, Emily steps in and takes care of what needs to be done, teaches young Explorers. She does a fantastic job, and I wanted us to, I wanted to recognize her as well. So, we have a few other ones that are missing, but we have a total of eight Explorers. But, thank you.
Captain, was that the, is that the promotion that I was told about?
That was it. You give him the microphone, he just runs.
Congratulations, that's great.
I'm a little long-winded.
Mr. Adi, who's your mom and dad?
Uh, Williams.
Different Adis. So, you, you're tall. You could have been David Adis too, Lindsay.
Yeah. And Lindsay is my, she and our John were all classmates at Lloyd's, so you kind
of look alike. Congratulations. We're happy you all do this, and we're pleased that you came here this evening. We thank you for everything you've done, and hope you will consider police work part of your life's calling. Aren't they great?
I should say.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mayor's report this evening. I've got a couple things I want to discuss with you all. First of all, I received in the mail a letter from Ralph Drees confirming the Drees Company's intention to pay for, to pay the city of Earlanger $6,286 for three pieces of exercise equipment for Pod Number Three at Flagship Park. This is the exercise equipment that's for the elderly and/or disabled that we've been working on. I want to thank Anita Carmack, who's been spearheading this effort for us, and there are other donors who are going to be supplying the GT Impacts rubber surface. So, we have other people involved in this, but Ralph sent the letter saying that they've committed to buy the equipment. And again, thanks to the Drees Company for their civic involvement. That'll be a good addition to Flagship Park. The second letter I received that I wanted to go over with you all is that we, on our behalf and on all of our beheads, KLC has written a Congressman Massey a letter. There is some talk afoot in Washington about repealing or limiting the tax exemption for municipal bonds as a way to generate more money for them to waste in Washington on other things. And, one of the, it's a very good letter, but one thing I want to bring to your attention is this. This part, this paragraph says, "Should Congress cap or repeal the current exemption, there likely would be an immediate increase of up to two percentage points on the interest cost for governmental entities issuing bonds. Since these bonds are issued primarily for necessary infrastructure and capital projects, state and local government agencies will be forced to either delay the projects or increase taxes or fees on residents if they're going to do the projects." So, if anybody sees Congressman Massey and you have a like mind of this, you may want to echo the sentiment that the tax-free municipal bonds need to maintain, need to stay tax-free. That's the only way we can afford to do some of our projects. Okay? The third thing I want to talk to you about is, is many of you all know Chief Terry Allen retired as of Friday night at midnight. We want to congratulate him on his retirement and an excellent career here for the city. That's the bad news. The good news is, he told me he intends to come back as soon as they allow him as a volunteer, and he, with Earlanger Fire Department, can't get him, you can take, you know, the hat off of him, but he's still a firefighter. And the, and he's going to work the dogs, do the cadaver dogs, LJ, and continue doing, providing that service. But, that presents a challenge for us, as we all know, and I am perplexed on which way to go, and we're going to be working on this problem hopefully together. If we do a hire just from the people who are inside the department right now, that could be warranted, and there could be a good choice, as we have qualified and talented people inside the house. But, the last time I took a department head position, you know, you had the mayor burn me once, shame on you. Burn me twice, shame on me. The last time I hired without, at a department head level, without opening up to the entire world, I wound up firing her. Okay? So, I'm a little shy on that without testing the market. But, at the same time, you have, you have qualified people. And then, you want to, you also have to balance the question of who's the best possible person for this job versus keep it within the family, because we have a great fire family. And I don't know which direction to go. I do know this, that I've been helped by Assistant Chief Schulkers. He's given me some information. Retired Chief Allen's given me some information. Todd's talked with the guys over there to help me, and we'll be opening the position, you know, posting it for applications pretty soon. But, hopefully, I'll have some input from you guys on, on direction which way to go. So, that's one problem I'm dealing with. I also want to congratulate Joel Shepherd and Greg Pullman, two of our fine police officers who have, who have retired. I was told Saturday, and I think Chief Fields told me this, and he's at an FBI training, by the way. That's why he's not here. But, Chief Fields just said, looking right at him. Another one of our police officers who's been here forever is going to retire July 1st. Come on.
I have to let her know.
Lacrosse.
Wait for the.
Colera, okay. The, the, that's great for them, and I, and I hope that, wish them well in their next careers. But, the challenge for us is, we're eight officers down, and, you know, we're cranking away trying to hire qualified people to work for us here, and qualified people to run our fire department, is we're always trying to find, you know, people to work there for us. So, why is it so important? Well, I, I thought about today. Officer Claire brought me my mayor mail. I don't know if you all know this enough, but almost every day I get two, three, four pouches of mail from the city building brought to my house, and some of which goes into the circular file, but much of which has, has to be brought back here, and involves what's going on. And I had a discussion with her about Saturday, and the reason why these hires are so important is this. She's here Saturday night at the retirement party for Greg and for Joel, okay, with her kids. Great time. Ten hours later, she's on first shift and working Turkeyfoot Road, and who should drive right by her but the guy from South Carolina who wanted on a warrant for killing his grandmother or grandfather in a fire? And she initiates the pursuit when he wound up being pulled over in, I think, maybe Cincinnati. But, she's the one who started it, and she told me today how well Earlanger PSC and our dispatch did, walked her through the program. We had the right people in the right place. Everybody was calm. You know, I mean, it was how she did it, and that caused me to think about this process. I don't care who you are. If you're headed from north to south through middle America, you come through Earlanger. You can go around Cincinnati. You can go around Covington. But, if you're going to get from, unless you're going down 27 to, you know, Pemberton County in that direction, if you want to get from anywhere north to anywhere south in this part of the country, you come right through the city of Earlanger. We get them all. Okay? And as a result of that, a byproduct of the fact that we get them all here, is we have affordable housing of all types in this city. I mean, all types. Low rent, Section Eight all the way to, you know, well, the Banshees in Edgewood, but you know what I mean. There are bigger houses in other areas than the city. And as a result of that, and because we have affordable housing of all sizes, we have more transient people who come through town. They go through, they get on the expressway, and this is where they stop because we got the places for them to live. And they're coming here from Somalia, and from Mexico, and from Eastern Europe, Eastern Europe, and we get them from Asia. And as a result, it causes issues for the Earlanger Housing Independence Schools, who we learned last week at our committee meeting, takes everybody that comes in the front door. This stuff all goes hand in hand, this all works together hand in hand. And that's why it's so important that these hires that we make and the service that we provide as a city, we can't take any of this lightly, because it has a profound effect on everybody that we serve, and not just the folks that live here, but everybody who travels up and down 75, right behind us here, and goes around, you know, and I said north and south, it's also east to west. If you're going east to west through the Cincinnati region, Indiana, Illinois, across this way towards West Virginia, you're going through here too, because you're hitting 74 and 275 and in double A highway. We are the crossroads, we're the crossroads of America, at least for this part of the country. And that's why it's so important. So, taking that on to the next, to the next level is our, is our budget tonight that we're going to talk about. As you have, as you think about and consider your vote tonight, I want you to remember three or four things. What we do is, it's not everyday stuff. It's really important stuff. We may be on a very lower level. We're not in Washington, but these votes are all very hard. The budget that you have in front of you is a compromise document, and it's a compromise document in lots of different areas. My duty, my duty, and the administration's duty, is to give you a balanced budget that meets the basic needs of the city. I will submit to you that this budget does that. Is it everything I want? No. Is it everything you all want? No. But, remember, in this particular year, this was an extremely difficult budget year because Greg Engelmann and Steve had moving targets until a couple weeks ago. We didn't know revenues. We didn't know dispatch. We didn't know anything, and it just kept moving. He must have done 50 iterations of this document before we came down with something final. Second of all, there is an active salary committee working within the city of Earlanger to revamp our step matrix system, if that's what we wind up doing, to change the way people are paid and how they, the comparative payments are made within the city. I didn't want to get in the way of what they were doing, because we may come back here in October, and they've got a whole new way of paying people that they're going to want to implement. That's why I put a percent and a half, as opposed to the two or three that other people wanted in here, because I wanted to at least acknowledge the folks that we, we think we have the money to increase their pay a little bit. At the same time, we're reworking the entire salary structure. So, again, I didn't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. And, and the third part, the third point is, this is a plan, and we amend these plans all the time. So, as conditions change down the road, like 330 new jobs coming in September, which we didn't know the last time we talked about the budget, you know, we can add people, subtract people, add programs. We always do. As the need arises, sometimes we have to build a new road up the Do Run Lake dam because the old one falls down, and we have to enter a partnership with the county to do that. Sometimes, you know, we have a, Earlanger Road collapses, and we decide not to fix it. These types of things happen all the time, so don't think that if we pass the budget tonight, that's the end of the story. It's just the beginning of the story. And the fourth thing, and the last thing I want to tell you is, since Greg convinced me, and rightfully so, that we should do our budget planning on a three-year cycle. When we do this year's budget, we're voting on this year's budget, but Greg has already worked out for us what, without any major changes, it will do to next year's budget and the year after. That's why if we hire somebody now, we know what the effect's going to be in three years. And what I've been trying to do, right or wrong, is to present to you budgets that keep the third year in the black, and making some of the changes that I wanted to make this year, threw that out of whack. Now, there might have been time, there might have been a way to finagle it some more so that we could do the things we wanted to do, but with the moving targets of the revenue, I didn't have it. We just couldn't work it out. And I can't thank Greg and Steve enough for bearing with me, and bearing with all of us, with all of our suggestions with them, to come up with the budget plan here tonight. I hope that you all pass the budget, and I hope that, and I hope that you all will recognize that there are things in the budget that I don't like either, but it's just a plan. And, but we are required by July 1st to have that plan, and otherwise we'll be coming back here again. Okay? That's the end of my message. Thank you all for listening to me tonight. Right now, we're going to move on to committee meetings. First is Public Safety Police, Ms. Sudkamp, Ms. Pitts.
I'll go first, either. Okay. Well, Mayor kind of stole my thunder with this letter. Dear Chief Fields, after 22 years, it is in the best interest of my family that I retire from the Earlanger Police Department. There are many people that I will be eternally grateful for, for giving me this opportunity. Chief Sandel for taking a chance on an outsider and for hiring me as part of Earlanger's diversity program. Lieutenant Benny Gilbert for listening to my very, very New York Italian parents during the initial interview, then giving me some consideration when scheduling so I could continue to pursue my lacrosse officiating and coaching application. Sergeant Mike Mann for his tremendous leadership, and my two FTOs, Sergeant Todd Rice and Chief Tim Thames. My initial exposure to policing in Earlanger was with Sergeant Rice and Chief Thames. I drove around with them for five weeks each. I don't think Todd understood what I said, and I know much of what he said sounded like a foreign language to me. Sergeant Rice taught me the black and white while Chief Thames filled in all the gray areas. Both are the ultimate professional law enforcement officers and great friends. And finally, Chief Fields. Mark was a sergeant when I joined the PD. I had the pleasure of working with him and watching him move up the ladder to become the heart and soul of this department and the most respected police chief in Northern Kentucky. And he has been a pleasure and an honor working for him. I had the opportunity to work for many CEOs before I got into policing, and none of them looked out for the best interest of their people more than Mark. I wish everyone well, Pat Coolera. And he will be missed, I tell you. He is a special guy.
And he's one of our few, he's our token Yankee. And he's really Yankee, so. Great guy, great guy.
Fabulous man.
Okay, we had a committee meeting on recreational vehicles in the driveway, and we decided to, we're recommending to leave the abs, is, no changes.
And make a motion to do nothing.
Make a motion to do nothing.
Very good.
Hopefully, the last motion to do nothing.
Yes.
Next year around this time, we'll do that.
Yeah, exactly, probably.
It's, it's the gift that keeps on giving.
And Captain Jansen's in the house.
Captain!
Mayor and Council, good evening. As Mayor mentioned, Chief Fields is at a pre-arranged training engagement this evening, so he asked me to step in. Not only with Pat's retirement, but we also have another free spot because his translator won't be needed anymore.
Chief Fields emailed the monthly report out to everybody. If anybody has any questions,
I'll try to answer. I was going to go a little bit into detail with what Mayor Rouse mentioned with the pursuit over the weekend, but he covered it very eloquently, so I think we're okay there. Unless you all have any questions.
The more that I see and get the reports and talk to the officers and then talk to the firefighters, when, after these things, you know, we're right in the middle of it. Some people have nice residential neighborhoods to place, and Independence has got a lot of land they have to cover, but we got 75, 275, Dixie Highway, Turkeyfoot Road, Airport Road, and they all come through here. Any questions of Captain Jansen or the, or the committee?
This is the second arson fatality we've had come through in three years. The other one was out of Evansville, Indiana.
That's right.
That was out of.
Yep. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Public Safety Fire EMS. Ms. Skidmore, Mr. Dunhoff.
Okay, I'm going to read a report. This report is from Assistant Chief Todd Schulkers. It's a grant award announcement. I am proud to announce that the Earlanger Fire EMS Department has been awarded the 2012 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. This grant will allow the department to purchase 12 sets of turnout coats and pants and a new heart monitor defibrillator. This grant will assist with replacing some older gear that was purchased with the 2005 AFG program, as well as an original heart monitor that was purchased at the inception of our ALS program. The total award for this grant is $57,624, and that breaks down to the 12 sets of bumper gear at $2,100 a set for about $24,000, and then $33,000 plus or minus for the heart monitor. And as you may recall, in the past, the Earlanger Fire EMS Department has been awarded the following grants. In 2003, the AFG, $52,570 for wellness, fitness programs and equipment. 2005, the AFG grant, $118,066 for new turnout gear. 2007, the AFG, $193,372 for new radios, SCBA and thermal imaging cameras. 2008, AFG grant, $64,790 for TRT training. 2009, AFG, $35,000 for replacement of the standby generator at Station One. 2010, AFG, $89,681 for gear, training material, and two heart monitors. 2010 SAFER, $471,852 for hiring three full-time firefighter paramedics. 2011, AFG, $50,150 for SCBA, fill station and exhaust removal system at Station Three. 2014, sorry, I just want to make sure you all listen. I consider us extremely lucky to have received $1,133,105 from these federal grant programs. Without these grants, most of these projects would not have been funded. A special thank you to Captain Dave McQuerry, who handles the grant process for the department, and Chief Allen for his continued support. As always, please feel free to contact me should you have any questions, comments, and/or concerns. Thanks. Todd Schulkers.
Pretty amazing.
Very.
Great work, Todd. All the guys. Great work.
And also, with the retiring of Chief Allen, the Fire EMS Committee would like to request an executive session to discuss personnel.
Got that bill?
We got it, Bill. Get off the bus.
Executive session.
Yes.
Discuss personnel. Thank you, sir.
Read this again, Bill.
Where's your piece of paper?
I have one.
You got something?
He withdrew that Big Ten.
I feel like a loner down here, you know.
That's it. You got, Mr. Chief Schulkers now?
Chief!
I haven't heard of him.
Any questions of the committee or Chief Schulkers? And then we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Cahill, Mr. Brown.
Yes, you should have received your report from Mr. Milliken. There's a couple highlights I'd like to talk about. JPS Construction is starting back on Mystic Creek, a reconstruction project this week with completion projected for the end of July, weather permitting. Really excited about that. Some questions that did come up, I'm sure some of you've heard of this, is team members removed the old gazebo and concrete pad in the Dupo Park, and with installation of new gazebo scheduled for the week of June 17th. So, I did get a lot of calls about that, people wondering what happened to there. Lunch spot.
That's right. I heard about it.
Something exciting from my side of town is the construction of the walking trail to connect the glades, walking trail to Thorn Tree, is moving right along, and gravel base being installed as of May 31st, so you can see some connection going on and actually being able to walk across Earlanger.
People are already walking on it. It's not even done yet.
But, they're ready for that, that's for sure.
It's going to get a lot of, you know, I drive by there every day. It's going to get a lot of activity.
It already has.
So, we do have, we do have a project we'll talk about later for the betterment of Earlanger. Once we get that all finished, we're going to do a piece to the East 5K walking.
There you go. That'd be great.
That was Mr. Bogart's idea, so once he gets back in rehab, we'll get that, we'll get working on that. The other thing we discussed was the rental properties. We'll request a committee meeting to review the rental property ordinances from the other cities on the 18th. I believe that is. Is that correct?
Now, the question is, if you all can have that on the 18th, but I won't be here. I'll be at the Kentucky Bar Convention. Something kind of important's happening that week. But, you can have the committee meeting without me, or you can do it. We're going to be here anyway the next Tuesday, because we have to have a special meeting for Duke franchise, franchise.
Franchise ordinance.
Franchise here. So, it's your call. You can do it the 18th, or we can put it all off to the last Tuesday end.
The last Tuesday?
Yeah.
Probably the last Tuesday.
Okay.
And, Ms. Milliken?
Smell good.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Ed, didn't you tell me that, didn't you tell me that when you all were taking apart the old gazebo up here, that the base of it, once you got down to it, just lifted right up? It wasn't held down by anything?
It had a two-tier base, and the top tier was anchored to the bottom tier, and the bottom tier was anchored to the concrete pad, so I was surprised it didn't come, come down in a big windstorm. It took our building back when I came here.
It's a good thing that the Wicked Witch of the East didn't come by. They would have followed the Dorothy.
No, I stayed home.
Any questions of the committee or Ed? Yes, Shane?
Is there, where the greens is running down there, is there going to be like a crosswalk at any point to cross over?
It just went through that with, with Mr. Beeks, yeah.
There's going to be a crosswalk at Thorn Tree with blinker signs, like some Nelson Road crosswalk there.
Cool. Thank you.
It's going to be a heck of a project. It already is, but it's going to be great. Any other questions? All right, seeing them, we'll move on to Administration. Mr. Burke, Mr. Longshore.
We're going to have Missy and Elizabeth on tonight. Miss?
Big night for Missy.
First thing I'd like to do is introduce two new members of our administration team, Bobby Joe Klassner and Karen Moffett. Bobby Joe comes to us with four years of HR experience and has just so quickly picked up and, and taken a hold of that position and, and really helped me out. And Karen is, comes with years of experience in office. She's going to be our community events planner. She's already started with the summer program and working with that, so welcome them both.
The problem with them is neither of them smile ever. They're always so down. They're always so down. Welcome to our team.
Thank you for allowing me to be at the camp. Excited to be here.
All right.
Council was, you all received my monthly report by email. The one thing that I didn't get in there and I wanted to talk to you all about this evening is our insurance premium renewals. Now's the time of year that we do that. I've given you a little packet here of, a breakdown of what it's, what it is and, and what we've spent over the last five years and how the premiums have changed and everything. This year, the renewal premiums for our workers' compensation is $142,000, which last year was $160,000. Now, a lot of that depends on the audit that they give every year with the payroll and everything, but also it depends on how well we do, how few claims we have, the safety procedures that we have in place, our safety committee meeting. There's a lot that we do, or, you know, as an organization, that helps lower those costs. One of the other things that I was able to do is if we were a member of the Kentucky State Chamber, they would reduce our premiums another 10%, which is another $14,000 off that $142,000 that we had. Why being a member of the State Chamber makes that big of a difference, I'm not quite sure, but we're now members. And that cost us about $1,200, so it was kind of a no-brainer, you know, $14,000, $1,200. The other one is the, our package for the liability and, and property tax. This year it came in at $207,000. Last year it was $214,000. So that's been reduced a little bit, and we actually, thanks to Chuck Hongkamp, our, our agent of record, does such a wonderful job of gathering up the quotes for me, looking at the different coverages that we have and everything, and brings it back to me, and I just have to say, "Okay, well, you know, we'll go this way or go that way." That has, we've got better coverage now than we did five years ago, and with less money paying out. So the other policy that we have that I wanted to mention is our, one with Hartford, it's our crime coverage. If one of our employees would, heaven forbid, decide to steal from us, something like that, we have coverage to cover that. I think it's up to $4 million, so, you know. What I'm asking tonight is your approval on to accept those quotes for KLC and Worker, and Keamy and Hartford, so I can give them approval.
Is there a motion, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Shane, any discussion? Isn't it interesting how when you work hard here to keep things under control, the premiums go down for a change? They don't always do that, but they did this time.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Missy.
Any questions of Missy or the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to Finance. Mr. Hired, Mr. Blankenschmidt.
We have a finance committee meeting on May 21. During that meeting, Mr. Engelman presented the mayor's budget recommendation for fiscal year 2014 and the three-year plan for 2014, 15, and 16. This finance committee meeting was immediately followed by a special council meeting for the first reading of the fiscal year 2014 budget and the amended budget for 2013. The second reading of both ordinances is scheduled for tonight's meeting. Now that they've gotten done with the budget, or at least we're finalizing the budget, they've begun work on the audit papers for fiscal year 2013.
Greg Engelman's in the house. Greg, has he else to say?
Any questions to the committee or Mr. Engelman? Seeing none, we'll move on to Friendship City Networking.
Yes, first of all, I have a report on our committee meeting of May 28. We were very impressed with the presentation given by Dr. Burkhardt and Mr. Paul Moore. I think it was very informative, and we also agreed to continue to keep in touch with what's happening in our schools. And as Dr. Burkhardt stated in her email to us, we would like to continue to grow and develop strong partnerships. And so I just think it was really a productive evening, and hopefully we can continue that. Second thing I have is we celebrated City Government Month, and we want to give a special thank you to so many people that were involved in pulling this off. First of all, Tank for providing us with a bus for the tour. They've done that for the last three years, which is really awesome. UDF and Angelo's Kristen for the tour and the ice cream. Tishner Middle School for participating and allowing us to educate their social studies students on local government and their community. Bill Howard for donating his time to drive the bus for the last three years. Renee Skidmore for the last three years, and Pat Harn, Pat Han, sorry, for their narration during the bus tour, so they actually tell the kids the history of the city as they drive through. Jack Shabon and Paul Dusin for their presentation at the Depot Museum. Sherry Hoffman and Kathy Cahill for the tour of the general government part of the tour. Faith Woods and Rodney Snow for organizing lunch for everybody, and all the departments for their participation and support. The students had a great time. The Public Works sign shop is always a hit, and the Fire EMS Department worked as a group by providing different stations. Captain Arons presented the new SRT vehicle, and the students met our K-9 officer. And the students had a great, had great questions for Sherry Hoffman and Kathy Cahill on government. So it's a good program, and hopefully it continues. We've done it for the last three years, and I'm a firm believer that the students really need to be informed, because as a high school teacher, I can see that they really don't know sometimes what goes on up here. So hats off to everybody that was, that was involved in that program. We really appreciate it. And now Kathy.
I had the pleasure of being at the amazing race, and all I did was come and help Jennifer Magerly and Ralph Sidner, and just give them some moral support. They did everything. This year's scavenger hunt was a huge success. The teams raced through the city of Erlanger to complete daunting tasks such as playing leapfrog down Commonwealth Avenue, doing the MC Hammer Shuffle in the front of Woodlawn Hills subdivision, performing synchronized swimming in a kiddie pool, and other arduous tasks. Everyone had a great time and is looking forward to a fun challenge next year's race. Beth Curl's team was the winner with 885 points, and Team Cahill wasn't able to participate because Tom was in China. He'll be back next year. Curl, watch out, we're back. Enjoy your year, just once, that's all you got. Now, the summer park program has started, and we want to give some support to our new advance directors by showing up at some of these events. The first one is, sorry, Thursday, June 13. It's Erlanger Night at Putt-Putt. Event runs from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM and is free to Erlanger residents. You must bring proof that you're an Erlanger resident. And then Thursday, June 20, Public Works' Touch a Truck event at the Public Works Building. This event runs from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, is free to everyone, and I think you're gonna have snow cones?
I'm not sure.
I think so. I think we got...
Cone of ice.
Yeah, cone of ice. I think you, it's on there. It's, it's ready to go. And then we have Thursday, June 27. It's to be announced, so I'm thinking it's a great surprise, whatever it's gonna be, so we will find out. Just look on our webpage and find out what's going on.
It will be a big surprise.
Yeah, big surprise. So just check it out and see what's going on. And Becky's in the house.
Ms. Hopkins, she has a report this evening.
I just wanted to take a few minutes and fill you in on what's been happening in terms of enterprise technology over the past almost 12 months now. We're coming to the end of our budget session, and everything that I've done this year is what you all said yes to in January of 2012. So strap on your seat belts, because it's been quite a year of change technologically speaking in the city of Erlanger. As you know, I've been around here since the year 2000, and when I first came on board, we were a very fragmented organization in terms of tech, our technological presence and the number of small networks we had in each of our departments. This year brought a tremendous amount of change, like I stated. Last year at this time, we hosted everything that we do. We had 13 servers, seven of which were virtualized, so some of those 13 servers served more than one purpose. We hosted everything locally. One thing that's missing on here is, oh, I'm sorry, it is on there, the Firehouse software application. And all of our facilities, inclusive of Buttermilk Pike, Narrows Road, the Historical Society and the Public Works facility, as well as Fire Station 1, were connected either through a fiber link underneath the street or point-to-point T1s. The face of technology in the city today is very different. Most of all of our servers have been retired. We still host our own active directory here, so we have a little bit of redundancy in some of the things I do, and a few of our applications still remain local because they do not play nicely in a cloud environment. PT-Win is the application that we currently use for building permits and inspections. We're looking to cloud that off as soon as possible as well. So for all those 13 servers, seven of which were virtualized, and all of the mission-critical applications across all of our departments, we moved them into four different cloud environments. Some of them, all of them proprietary in one sense. We belong to essentially private networks, but they're all cloud-based now. Firehouse Software was the first application to move off-site, and that was at the end of June of last year. It went fairly well, though we have some speed issues that are cropping up once again. So a lot of my role has changed from being involved in, in the nooks and crannies of how an application functions within our environment, to managing the contracts and holding those, those contractors' feet to the coals to make sure that we get the best bang for our buck in our new cloud environments. Exchange was the second application that we decided to off-site, and it's been a real challenge on a daily basis, dealing with the ins and outs of all the outlook problems we have today. It was a much different environment when we hosted everything on-site. It's a give-and-take. It was cheaper for us to move our hosted Exchange, to move towards a hosted Exchange environment instead of updating all the hardware and software in our basement. The burden of updates and of monitoring the system 24/7 is no longer ours. Once again, it's a matter of managing those contracts and all the vendors we have in place for that. Third up for migration to the cloud was Springbrook Software. We were forced to have to upgrade our application, Springbrook, to their newest offering because they were ceasing support of the, the old version that we had in-house. So it became a question of do we keep, do we upgrade the new version to our own environment, or do we go ahead and, and put it in their proprietary cloud? And we chose that. There was some significant expense involved with that this year. However, over the, over the period of the next five years, we will really enjoy some cost savings, and once again, the burden of administration has been alleviated from hosting that on-premise. The last move to the cloud occurred in December, and that was the rest of everything. That was the rest of Microsoft Office, it was PONTAM, our property tax database software. All of that moved towards, to a Von Lehman Technology Cloud Environment, which is down on 7th Street in downtown Cincinnati. All of these moves were made in, in facing the reality that we needed to upgrade all of our hardware downstairs. And instead of investing capital expenditure dollars in our basement, where we had some environmental concerns that continued to, to plague us, we opted to go the operational expense side, you know, move towards just an operational ongoing expense and alleviating a lot of the burden on our building. Hopefully we'll, we'll enjoy some decreased cost in utilities, and we're a little greener. Also, in preparation for all these moves, most of our facilities were upgraded to a fiber connection. We still have a couple of facilities that are point-to-point T1s, but in and out of here, we have 50 megs of dedicated fiber, and it's redundant, so we shouldn't, we shouldn't be down for any reason unless there's a true catastrophic failure in the region. Currently, I alluded to this in some of what I said. It's a current project in getting all of our cloud environments to play nicely together. Prior to moving to any cloud environments, one of the things you all said yes to last year was to upgrade our desktop hardware. At that point, we were looking at going thin client. I'm thankful at that, at this stage of the game, we did not do that, because we're still relying on some local processing capabilities. I, I didn't anticipate that, but by the time it's, time to refresh our, our local desktop hardware again in another two years, we should be prime candidates for moving towards thin clients on our desktops. Another point of contention we have with all of our new cloud environments is the printing capabilities have, have, we've struggled with printing locally from each cloud environment, so that's an ongoing issue that I'm running into. And then, of course, the management of all of our mobile devices are increasing every day with tablets and the cell phones, integrating people who bring their own devices into our, into our organization, and getting those synchronized and authenticated onto our network. I am, I'm, I'm hopefully within 24 hours of rolling out a new Intranet site, so our, our information that we roll out to our internal employees is, is fresh and dynamic and being able to stay up to date. I have just completed an order on, order on, for a new podium here that is technologically savvy. It has its own sound system. We'll be able to utilize a wireless microphone here. There'll be a display device on the front of this device, so you all know who's up here addressing you, and, and with proper placement, the audience should as well. And then into next year, I'm looking at upgrading the microphone, the microphone technology in front of all of you, and hopefully some of our cameras, as well as some of the components in the back room. And of course, the digital signage project and content management piece, I'm looking to expend those dollars by June 30th and get several pieces of that installed shortly thereafter. Additionally, we are in our fourth of our fifth year with our Cisco Voice Over IP system. This is one of the pieces of hardware with its current software version that we have does not play nicely, does not integrate nicely with our hosted Exchange environment. So some of the functionality we were enjoying while we had it, while we had Exchange hosted locally, has broken down. So I'm looking at recycling our phone system into something that's partially cloud-based that'll allow us to utilize our same desktop phones and restore that integration piece that we've lost when we went to a hosted Exchange environment. Earlier, I stated that one of the, one of the applications we kept local because it doesn't play well in any cloud environment that we have is the PT-Win, the application that Mark Stewart uses for building inspections and building permitting. And we've been enjoying video streaming of our live council members since Mayor Rouse came on board. That was one of his initiatives. It's time to look at that, make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck. We pay a significant money, amount of money every year for this streaming solution, and I think there's some other more affordable ways for us to, to achieve the same results. And then our current website, while it's fine, we have a well-versed staff on how to maintain and update that. There's a couple of components within our website I'd like to revisit, one of which is the citizen request module. That's a significant expense to us on an annual basis, and I'd like to see if there's some other options out there that, that could serve the same, satisfy the same need. And on a personal front, I just wanted to tell you what I've just accomplished. Last year at this time, I was accepted into the Leadership Northern Kentucky Program, and I graduated in April. That is a very worthwhile endeavor, and I am thankful, very thankful to the city of Erlanger for funding that opportunity for me, and I hope to bring back a lot of what I've learned and apply it here. I've been sitting on the Center for Digital Government Advisory Panel for 13 years. That organization's been in, in existence for 14 years, and every year we get together and pull together and an agenda, and then a day, a day-long conference that is held in Frankfurt. It's primarily driven by state-level IT professionals. However, I represent municipalities of 50,000 or less, and then the CIO from Louisville Metro, Beth Niblock, represents the rest of the municipalities. So I'm, I'm very honored to, to continue that representation. Additionally, I was appointed by Governor Fletcher several years ago to be part of the Kentucky Wireless Interoperability Executive Committee. And what that does is, it's a, it's a law enforcement slash fire, first responders type of, of committee. All of the applications for grants come through our, our body, and we are to ensure that before they're awarded, that they adhere to and comply with all of the nuances of interoperability, so we don't have the radio breakdown that we unfortunately still currently have across jurisdictions. And last but not least, I recently began... And last but not least, I recently became a Kentucky Colonel, so please address me appropriately. And if any of you would like to come in and take a look at what we've got, Jim, I would love to host you for a day, and perhaps you can give me some insight.
Y'all got all that? Y'all got all that? Did you understand all that? Okay, all right. Any questions? Becky?
Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats.
Thank you.
Good job.
You've heard the reports of standing committees. I entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Ms. Pitts, second by Ms. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just want to let you know, Becky and I are in touch weekly, at least two or three times a week. I hear about these things that are going on there at a level that is above my wage rate, my pay rate. I do my best to understand. I can't come in here and report it all to you, because I couldn't repeat right now five or six things that she just said. But I am aware of all the stuff that she's doing, and Becky is, you know, it's not like bricks and mortars, but boy, she is swamped. And she thought she would be done with taking this wire from this place and plugging it into this hole over here, and oh, there'll be other things for me to do, and holding the vendors' feet to the fire has been a full-time job, and she's still doing the wires. So, hats off to you, Becky. Any reports from our representatives this evening, from any of the groups? Yeah, Patty?
Well, I thought perhaps Mr. Hahn would like to stand up and talk about the Dixie Project, the sidewalks?
I can do that.
Okay.
Actually, why don't you report to us on the Dixie Project and also the St. Elizabeth thing that you've been working on for months?
As you all can see, the Dixie Project is moving forward, and Jim can certainly feel free to chime in here anytime, because we have hit a few unknowns as we've gone through there and dug some holes, which you can imagine. But the project is moving forward. They've switched sides. They're on the Elsberg side now, heading south. They're pouring today in front of the Dusing Brothers Ice House, so that's, it's really moving along nice. All good comments. Recently, we received a call from the community recorder, which I gave him my insight and talked about Patty and the Renaissance, how this vision got started along Dixie Highway, and how we came to where we are. So, Jim, do you have anything else?
As David indicated, we're basically completed as far as the pavement work on the Erlanger side. There's still landscaping that will occur, and streetlights. And the way it's going to happen is the contractor will finish all the paving work on both sides of the highway, then our minority landscaper from Richmond will come in and do all the landscaping on both sides of the highway, and then when they move out, David will contract with the Duke to install the streetlights, and that will complete the work from Graves Avenue to Vine Street. To continue with that, while David's standing up there, we have, David and the mayor and I have signed a recommendation that's sent into Frankfurt on the proposal for McGalpin. We're recommending the low bidder. We don't know whether they will be acceptable to the state because of their minority business relationship. However, we have discovered that either of our first two contractors is within our budget, so we won't be overrunning anything. And secondly, we're fortunate that the sidewalk portion of the project contractor is our current contractor that's working on the sidewalks for beautification, is also the subcontractor for both the low bidder and the second bidder. So, we have the same contractor doing all the sidewalks. Further, we put an addendum, addendum, addition to our contract that if we had enough money, we were going to complete the sidewalk from Vine Street to the McGalpin intersection, along with the McGalpin intersection. So, the sidewalk, we do have enough money in the budget now, based on those bids. So, the sidewalk on the Erlanger side will be completed from Graves Avenue to almost the, what used to be the building that the music, the piano tuner, passed the new bus stop on our side. So, we won't have any gaps except for in front of Bicycle Shop.
And that was their choice.
When that portion is done, then David again will contract with Duke, and we'll have streetlights put on our side of the highway in that particular area. So, we'll have an extensive portion of the Dixie Highway with new beautification, sidewalks, landscaping, and streetlights.
And this, the highway project, I was talking with the contractor today, they seem to think that they would be finished by the end of this month.
Wow.
So, they're moving along, so the weather's been good here lately for them to pour, so things are moving on.
Then the other project that David works on these, and most of which I can't tell you. If I told you, I'd have to kill you. David would have to kill me if I told you. He tells me, because the information triad and some of the other places is confidential, and companies don't want to know where they're looking. But we got one.
Yes, the St. Elizabeth project is one that I work mostly with the owners of the building. I didn't deal specifically with St. Elizabeth on this project, because there's kind of a code among economic development that you don't poach somebody else's businesses here locally. So, you know, we don't.
Unless you're Ohio.
Unless you're Ohio, then that's right. So, but yes, it appears that it'll be about three hundred and thirty employees. There will be leasing approximately forty-five thousand square feet out at the building that Toyota Bashuku and the Gap and Snyder Electric, you see the signs on it. So, they'll be on the second floor of that.
The president of St. Elizabeth told me on the phone Friday that they're leasing less space than they have in Covington, and they're going to put more employees in it. That's how inefficient the space is where they are right now.
So, they're, and again, they thought that they'd be in there in about three months, three to four months, so we'll see some revenue this year. I spoke, as the mayor did today also, I believe, and Sherry, to a gentleman by the name of David Bailey. His exact title eludes me, but he would like to come to our July 2nd council meeting and speak about five or ten minutes to you all, explaining what they are going to do and all their procedures, so.
And I told him, "Please welcome our new corporate representative from St. Elizabeth."
Yes. So.
Thanks, Dave.
All righty.
Thank you, David.
Happy birthday, David.
Is today your birthday?
Yeah.
How old are you?
Happy birthday!
Fifty-five? Fifty-six? Oh, my God. Fifty-six? Gee.
Ah, you're just a pup.
Any other reports from any of our representatives?
Well, I would like to. Phil?
Yes.
This one's for you. Okay. I would like to have, I would like to have an executive session for discussing the job description for a CAO, and then other job descriptions with the City of Erlanger.
That's also personnel, yes.
Tonight?
Tonight?
Okay.
And I wanted to see if we could put in committee the arbitration resolution that we didn't pass. I want the board to be expanded, see if, the word "board" to be expanded to include all twelve members of city council, to see if we want to do it or not do it, or just forget it.
You want to take a look at the ordinance that we have that says if the mayor wants to discharge somebody, they have the right to a fact-finding hearing in front of an independent attorney who has governmental experience, city government background, to determine the facts, and you want to perhaps expand that ordinance?
To, yes, to be all twelve members of city council. If the council would.
In the Administration Committee, and we'll try to have our first meeting on that on the twenty, whatever it is, the twenty-fifth? Okay? Very good. Any other reports? Let's go to reports of city operations. Mr. Vias.
Yes, sir. I just about took care of my report, thanks to David. The only thing I would like to point out about what Ed discussed earlier, and I think the Public Works Committee mentioned the work on Narrows Road with the sidewalk. I don't know if you all really have grasped the magnitude of what that has done, but you can actually walk out the front door here right now, and you'll be able to walk to Flagship Park without getting off the sidewalk. So, that's, took us a lot of years to get there, but the route will take you through the Spring Valley Park and on into the Flagship Park. But if you feel like walking a lot, you can start right here at the front door and walk all the way over there.
That's awesome.
That's all I have.
That's a big deal.
How many miles is that?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, I'll tell you what.
Seven point.
Because of a lot of discussions lately, I know that from my house here, it's seven point one miles.
It'd be a little short of that, but it'd be in the neighborhood of six and a half, anyway.
And I did the round trip in June of the thirty, in May of the thirty-one days, twenty-seven days. Okay? Any questions, Mr. Vias?
Boy, everybody's weird.
I think it would be cool if we had a map of all our sidewalks like that to connect the, all the parks on the website there, maybe?
Planning Commission should have that available.
We can get that.
I think that's a good idea.
We'll get that. Very good. Our city attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Oh, sir, I have nothing but the ordinances.
Any questions of Mr. Wickman? We've heard him report to city operations, their motion to adopt Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence, Ms. Hoffman. I know we got one or two.
Mayor Rouse received a card from Amy Kerdoff, the 2013 recipient of the City of Erlanger Community Achievement Scholarship. She thanked the City of Erlanger for being awarded this scholarship, and stated that she will be using it to attend the University of Kentucky. And the mayor also received a postcard from Jeff Miles. He's in Afghanistan now. He did send us his address, so if anybody wants to send him anything, please get with us. We were thinking about getting some care packages together.
Awesome.
I have to tell you, Amy Kerdoff, she's such a sweetheart. When I was at Dixie and I gave them their award, I always give them a key to the city in one of those proclamations, naming the next day Amy Kerdoff Day in the City of Erlanger. And I was told that the whole senior, the whole senior class, I think, somebody went out and had T-shirts printed up and said, "This is Amy Kerdoff Day."
How neat.
And then the whole senior class at Dixie was wearing that T-shirt. I thought that was really cool.
That is really.
That says a lot for her.
Yeah, it says a lot for her, and it says a lot for the kids at Dixie to pick up on that.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
That's really cool. Okay, this is the time we have in our agenda for any citizens or public comments. We have anybody signed up? Good, we'll slide right by that. It's always good to slide right by that.
I am a citizen, may I make a comment?
Is it new business or old business, or just a comment?
It's a comment.
Go right ahead.
I wanted to publicly thank Erlanger Fire and EMS for saving my husband's life once again. They are absolutely always there.
They're the best.
For everybody, but I'm always treated like the queen. I mean, it's almost embarrassing. But I thank you, I love you all dearly, and I got my habits still, thanks to them.
They're great. Any bids this evening?
Oh, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any work in progress, old business, we need to report on. Any new business for the good and welfare of the city? I have three things. Yeah, Jim, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody that this Thursday at the Planning Commission, they will be going over the new comprehensive plan, direction 2030, and probably in the next day or so. If you want to check out the Local Twelve website, you can see the replay of this Sunday's Newsmakers, featuring our own Diane Brown discussing the comprehensive plan.
Diane who?
Brown. Gorgeous young lady.
Do you want supper tonight?
And an environmentalist on top of it.
She's the mother of your child.
She did say something about green.
There are three dates that I want to discuss with you all. I think we've covered two of them, one of them anyway. June 18th, which is our usual council night in June, I will be in Lexington, in Louisville for the KBA convention. We have nothing scheduled for that night, so that's covered. July the 2nd is our normal July council meeting. It's, you know, Fourth of July is two days later, but because it's not on the Fourth, I just assume we can, unless you all are going to be out of town, we continue as scheduled. Okay. And the third one, on August the 6th, is our regular city council meeting. I will be in San Francisco for the American Bar Association and the Southern Conference of Bar Presidents. You all may conduct the meeting, and our mayor, Pro Tem, will preside, or we can put it off to the 3rd, our regular council night, and I will be back, assuming I survive the trend.
I make a decision, we put it off till the 3rd.
But I want to go ahead and get that scheduled, let you know now. I went through my calendar today, and it's your choice, so what do y'all want to do?
Move it to the 3rd.
Go ahead.
Okay, John makes, is that a motion, John?
Make a motion.
The motion is we move it to the 3rd Tuesday, our regular meeting in August, that would be 14, that would be August the 20th, I believe. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown, okay? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, make a note of that, okay, Sherry? And we also need to have a, to schedule on the 25th, I guess it is, of June, at our committee meeting, we need to have a special meeting of city council for the reading of the ordinance on our Duke franchise, so we can finish that off.
That's not the reading of the ordinance, it's the acceptance of the bids.
It's the acceptance of the bids, I'm sorry. We have to do that in open council, acceptance of the bids. So, that would be the special call, okay, Sherry? That's all the new business I have. Anybody else have any? Okay, let's go on to legislation. Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir. The first ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, requiring both, one, graduation from the Department of Criminal Justice Training, or other training re-approved by the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council, and two, a written employment contract pursuant to KRS 70.290 for employment as an Erlanger police officer. And there is attached to the ordinance a template of the agreement that they're going to be required to sign.
If you all recall, this was proposed by Chief Fields because of the extensive amount of money that we spend training these people and getting them up to speed, we want them to at least commit to act of their responsibility. Motion to be to adopt an order published, motion by Ms. Sudcamp, second by Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Longshore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes, all ayes. Mr. Wickman.
Next ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Erlanger Ordinance Number 2365, and the budget adopted thereby for the City of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2013. And a copy of the proposed amendment is attached to the ordinance.
This is the amended budget for the current budget cycle we're in for the next twenty-six days. Entertained a motion that we adopt an order published, motion, Mr. Dunhoff, second by Ms. Sudcamp. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Longshore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries, all ayes. Mr. Wickman.
Last ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, adopting a budget for the City of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2013, providing that no money shall be expended by or on behalf of the City of Erlanger, except in accordance with that adopted budget. And again, the proposed budget is attached to the ordinance.
Motion to adopt an order published, motion, Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Ms. Sudcamp?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
No, ma'am.
What was the final tally?
Four nays.